Good evening. I'd like to call the Plainfield Board of Education that order tonight. It is November 13th. If you would have mind standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. We have first up in the agenda, the minutes of the meeting of October 9th, 2024. Is there anything anyone wishes to discuss, amend from those? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of October 9th, 2024.
Is that moved?
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All of those, motion carries. Just a order of business.
Would you like me to take minutes? We will have minutes. They can be converted with the video.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. So, all right. Next up in our packets is the individual student report, PHS student representatives.
All right. So, for debate team, they chose the topic for the Plainfield Regional Debate Tournament upcoming this year. It is that social media companies should be held legally responsible with significant consequences for the content posted by their users. Additionally, we also had tryouts for who will be competing in that tournament for Plainfield's teams. Also, as we speak, many students and alumni are performing solo, solos, duets, and duets and group numbers for the cabaret event upstairs in the auditorium. There, the music department is collecting non-perishable food items for Project Pin. And auditions are coming up this week for the musical this year, The Drowsy Chaparral.
The musical is The Drowsy Chaparral. It is a satire of theater. Is that fair?
Yes, I think they're like putting on a show, like within a show, basically.
I'm told it's very funny. I also heard that they had a lot of regional schools try to get into the debate tournament, that it's full, that we have multiple teams competing, and some schools even have multiple teams now.
Yeah, I believe, so Plainfield has two, Wheeler has two, there's a Woodstock team, E.O. Smith, NFA, and then I think there's like another exhibition match between like NFA and E.O. Smith's like B-team too. So, yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on with that.
And yes, Miss Smith, not only are we the creators of the Eastern Connecticut Debate Competition, we are the annual hosts. And they're always looking for excellent judges if you're willing to enjoy a very full, full day of competition. I think it starts, I feel like it started around nine o'clock and ended about four. Is that about right?
Yeah. I'm not sure exactly when the times go.
I've been here for the full day. Yeah, you're a judge, Mr. Peel?
I am not a judge. They have people much smarter than I to judge. But I believe it starts right after school and goes to six, seven o'clock at least at night.
So, it's a full...
Big event.
It's a full event.
Dinner's provided, too.
Oh, do you have the date of that?
Um, I, something's telling me December 1st, but I am not totally, it's not December 1st. Second?
December 5th.
5th, okay.
Yes, exactly as you said, December 5th, members of our community.
On the sports side of things, we had our homecoming football game on November 1st, and that was followed by our homecoming dance, which student council like got the theme together. It was tangled and decorated the whole cafeteria and everything for that with concession stands. And inside the school, we're doing a door decorating competition right now to kind of like bring, bring back school spirit. So, it was supposed to be due, or like, they were supposed to be judged last Friday, but they extended it to next Friday so everyone can have like more time to work on it. But yeah, that's going well.
I do have one question for Ms. Schneider, just for the record. What was the result of that upcoming football game?
Won. We won.
Excellent.
And that's kicking our football team back on a winning streak because we did win last Friday as well, or Saturday.
Thank you. And I have to say, I, myself and Mr. Nagel, actually, the night of homecoming were at Woodhose presenting an award and a recognition, and afterwards came over to the homecoming dance here at Plainfield High School. And I can, I can tell you five things. One, I was exceptionally impressed at the behavior, at the way students were behaving and conducting themselves. Two, I was excited, I was impressed at the student setup. I thought that just looking at it, it was far superior to dances that my children have attended for homecoming. The kids did a great job with tables set up. There was cornhole outside for kids who didn't want to dance. I can tell you, in my high school, we never had anything for kids who didn't want to dance. We just, "Didn't dance, you stood by the wall." I thought, I was very good at that. I thought the photo booth, Mr. Peel, was outstanding. I thought the kids really loved that. And I did go out and dance one dance of Cock and Joe with the student body, and I'm told there are no videos of it. So, that's, that's outstanding as well. Really great job, Mr. Peel and members of student government on what was a great dance. It was, it was a great night. Every student that I saw seemed to really be enjoying themselves, and it's a rare thing to be able to get every kid to enjoy themselves to the dance. So, your team did a great job.
Mrs. Bastian, sweep down for the full credit for that.
All right. Next up, we have elementary science.
Absolutely. I'm pulling up the presentation right now, and I believe you can follow along in your packets if you would like.
If you wouldn't mind, I'm just going to give a little context to the presentation before we start, just so new board members understand the presentation. So, last year during the budget process, we were engaged in quite a few conversations about various different things. One thing that came out of it was, how do we better align some of the things that we're doing with scheduling to meet the priorities of the district? One of our priorities is about the MTSS process and our building level, having those data conversations. And one kind of conversation that naturally started to come out about it was time, and looking at how can we get more time and planning time. And naturally, then kept on evolving to, we had this Makerspace block of time at our elementary schools at Musup and Shepherd Hill, but those were being implemented by paraprofessionals. And so, teachers were still in those classes with students, and we were just looking at that time as an opportunity to, one, meet multiple needs. One, to expand what we were doing with Makerspace and STEM down to the elementary level. Two, provide an additional block of time that's implemented by a certified staff member. So, the classroom teachers have that time off as extra prep time. But also, three, our STEM instruction and Makerspace instruction was, I don't want to say isolated, but it was only at Musup and Shepherd Hill. It wasn't being offered at Memorial. And so, was there a way that we could expand this, cake and file? So, that's kind of how this evolved. And so, we kind of implemented STEM kind of special class. We call it Science, Technology, Engineering, and Makerspace. And we have two of the fabulous teachers that kind of dove right in to that work this year, being kind of like brand new to what this was going to be, with gusto and enthusiasm that was great to see. And because they work in multiple schools, it was hard to kind of collect kids to come. So, the presentation is student focused, because you'll see that in the pictures, but they're here to highlight some of the key aspects that they've experienced with the students and kind of the vision and the direction of what we're trying to do with the STEM class that we're offering in our elementary school. So, I will turn it over to Ms. Goble and Ms. Darman.
So, I'm Kathleen Goble.
Okay. I'm Karen Darman. So, I work between Plainfield Memorial School with all of our fourth and fifth graders, and I also work two days a week with kindergarten and third graders at Musup Elementary School. And I am at Shepherd Hill for any case of Monday and Tuesday. So, just, now, just, just to let you know, when you talk about STEM, we're so much more than just science, so the technology piece, engineering process, and then math and the Makerspace. So, our focus is aligned with our NGSS science standards. So, we're enhancing what students are learning in the classroom. They are coming to us for more of a hands-on experience, learning experience on, it's kind of for me, coming from a classroom, this is my 11th year teaching, but as a classroom teacher for 10 years, the beauty for me is taking some of these non-traditional learners who may be struggling within the classroom, they come into STEM where it's fully different hands-on experience, and it's really kind of meeting the needs of all.
Another thing that we work on during STEM time is digital citizenship. So, we use Common Sense Media, which is approved by the state of Connecticut. They have lessons for grades eight through five, and we have so far this year, we've got different lessons on cyberbullying, the difference between personal and private, and also on being responsible online.
I think what for me was interesting, I've spent so many years in fourth and fifth grade, so then actually we are looking at is coding. And you wouldn't think, you know, coding would be everything is done online, but down to our kindergartners, they literally had a color-coded laminated card in front of them with an egg tartan and some pom-poms. So, we're talking about children as young as five years old coding, and then that just carries through into first grade, we have coding mice so that they code in the mouth sort of travels along and eats the cheese, and then all the way up to fourth and fifth grade, even in the third grade, they're using some really cool Legos. I don't know if any of you realize this, it's kind of inspiring for me, that there's a, there's a hub, there's a motor, and all of a sudden, if you see some of their faces, they're for the first time experiencing these Legos that are now moving, they have to follow directions, they have to collaborate more with their partners, and then they, you know, they're seeing, they're seeing this more kind of comfortable life.
As Mr. Sugarman said, we did not want to take away the Makerspace part of what has been happening at Musup and Shepherd Hill. So, we really wanted our students to continue to be able to have that time to be creative. And our goal each year will be to do some sort of community outreach. So, this year, our eighth degree students are going to be working on making greeting cards, and that would be directly going to our senior center here in Plainfield.
So, one of the things we talked about is the four Cs, creativity, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. This directly ties into the vision, it's the portrait of a graduate. So, you know, students are coming in and as you can see, you know, they're kind of given just a problem or an activity, but they're not guided in how to get to the end result. So, they're very creative. There's communication, almost every, pretty much every single thing we do is with a partner or in a group, and they have to understand that communication is key on that collaboration, again, teaching them how to work with others, and of course, that critical thinking piece, because we're not telling them, this is what you have to do, and everybody is doing it the same exact way. So, to just hear them come up with these things on their own, to share them and to just share kind of their excitement about it.
As the last year, it became a law in Connecticut that we need to have play-based learning, kindergarten through fifth grade. So, a lot of what we do is already play-based, but we also have at least one lesson a month where the students are able to have open, free choice. So, it may be working with curler beads or building with different types of materials where they, again, work in groups to figure things out. That's probably the best time for us. Any elementary teacher will know that students definitely learn best when they're playing, and we learn a lot when we watch them play as well.
And then the final thing, I'm fortunate enough that between the two buildings, I will be working with kindergartners through fifth grade. And so, what we're looking at is creating citizens who can solve real-world problems. So, for example, on our second graders, third graders are working with magnets, and one of the things that they were given the task to do is to come up with a solution that, that could use magnets. Fifth graders were learning all about plastic pollution and ways that we can, they had to do some research. What are ways that people have solved for air pollution, you know, toxic waste, water conservation? So, it's, it's starting with that play-based learning, but then it's also saying, you know, when you know better, you do better, and, and really effectively making these, these children that are going to grow up and make changes in the world. So, we thank you very much. It is something that we're both extremely passionate about. As you can see, you know, it's, it's very engaging and very fun, and we're just grateful to have this up in committee.
You were both in district in other roles last year. How's this year feel different?
I don't know if you're ready for my explanation.
Yeah, we probably message each other at least once a week saying how much we love what we do. And as classroom teachers, we loved it too, but this experience has just been wonderful to have different grade levels, and seeing the progression has been just awesome to be a part of.
And I, you know, I think for me, I really, I would be like being kicked that it's time for me to go, but if really, for me, I have been in a classroom, I've taught third grade, fourth grade, and fifth, and to be in this role, it absolutely aligns with who I am, like, let's get our hands dirty, let's get creative. And again, for me, you know, I had a student last year who was very severely ADD and struggled academically, but that child is a woodworker, he's a carpenter, he is a sculptor and a painter. And so, what I feel passionate about is that these children get to come in, and I don't know what their reading level is. I don't know if they received math intervention. All I know is when they walk through the doors in our classrooms, they are makers, they are engineers, and they are scientists. So, we'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both.
I just also wanted to highlight two as well. One thing that part of this kind of launch, and Mr. Nagel helped with this too, was we really didn't want to lose that Makerspace touch, right? So, we really connected with one of our community champions when we were making this change to really make sure that they understood what this change was. It wasn't getting rid of kind of what the original intent of Makerspace was. We really connected with Westminster Tool last year. Mr. Nagel and I went and visited them, explained the direction, why we were making this shift, how we were still keeping that Makerspace touch. This year, they've reached out to us a couple times, you saw on Facebook, but for the month of October, all of our fifth graders, every class, went toward Westminster Tool. They had a scavenger hunt, they worked with our staff to kind of get them prepared so they kind of understood what they were walking into, so they could see the idea of Makerspace in manufacturing engineering in real life. And to have an organization of small business like Makerspace that's so unique, but so high level in our community, to touch into, it happened to that was a, was a lesson for us, to, they are a true community partner, and it's something that we're going to continue to happen. So, we want to shop them out. They've also been lifelong champions, played at one school, also Makerspace. I think I blew out my mic.
Can I, oh, maybe mine's not on yet. I just want to, it's not a question, it's more of just a statement, is, so my son, we moved here in November of last year, and he went, he goes to this elementary, and he was having a really hard time going to school, and the only reason I could get him to go to school smiling was because of Makerspace. So, when we made the shift, I was like, I was nervous that like it was going to take that out of it, right? You guys all talked about that. And so, this year, I was like, okay, great. And his only complaint about it is that it only happens once a week. And he, he comes home and he says, "I made, I made a carnival ride," and they moved. And, and he's just so excited to go to school on Mondays because that is where he gets to thrive, and he gets to do what he loves to do. So, just want to say thank you.
I've heard so many wonderful things about that carnival ride lesson. I was invited to come watch it, and, and I didn't make it, and, and I've heard, everybody loves the carnival ride.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right. Moving on to principal reports in your packet. Our packet is filled with just bright, smiling faces, everything from the costumes for the school dances at PCMS to boomy nights with therapy dogs. It's just, it's a joy to kind of look to see what's going on in the community and to see those updates. So, I thank you. Does anyone have any good questions for any of our admins related to what's in here?
Mr. St. Jean, who won the pumpkin contest? It was impressive. Do you, do you know who won?
I believe it was Mrs. Grant that won. Would you like to know who came in second?
Who came in second? That, that was my real question.
Mrs. Kern.
Outstanding.
Thank you. All right. There are two additional communications. Tonight, you have the Scripps Family Fund for Education grant, which was $5,000 to the PHS Robotics Club, which is up and running. We just saw them, they came down, they're still raising money, and they have brought concessions down as part of their fundraiser. It's a new club this year. So, it's wonderful that they have this grant opportunity, and I very much look forward to seeing what they're going to be able to do with that. I would encourage any of our members, if they're here, to take a walk down the technology wing over there and see the changes that are going on. It's very impressive and very modern, just wonderful to see.
I put the Scripps Family Fund for Education grant on the agenda so that Mr. Peel could answer how the money was going to be spent, because sometimes that's a question members in the community have. So, Mr. Peel is here to speak to the robotics team and what they're planning to do. If anyone has any questions about the donation made to Plainfield Robotics.
No questions, but they are also accomplished makers. The snickerdoodles were amazing.
Thank you. With your acceptance of the donations, it allows the newly re-founded robotics team to really take off. We made several really key hires in the tech ed department this year, and Bonnie Bealyn being one of them. We brought her in because of her past experience as an engineering teacher and as a robotics teacher, and she has taken the bull by the horns. The reason this grant came in, and the reason the other two donations that are also part of it, was because of her hard work pounding the pavement. So, I think she said she sent out over 100 letters to companies asking for donations, because currently, we do not have any funding in our budget for robotics to kick off. So, rather than just saying, oh, there's no money, Bonnie took it to herself to apply for grants and get donations to get, to get it off the ground. And she has big plans in the future, along with one of our science teachers, Mr. Robuska, who has also a background in robotics, to bring the program up and move forward in the future. So, you'll hear a lot more about robotics in the future.
The other communication that you have came in your additional information tonight, which was the press release for immediate release. I'll ask Mr. Brennan to speak about that.
Absolutely. So, at the end of last week, I received notification from the state of Connecticut that based on the scores which had taken place within the Connecticut State Department of Education Performance Index, the Shepherd Hill Elementary School and Musup Elementary School have both been named Schools of Distinction by the State Department of Ed. This is an honor they provide for student performance. I would now note that in the last two years, every Plainfield Elementary School has been named a School of Distinction. I would also note that, as I said in the press release, Plainfield Memorial also had outstanding scores. They've been School of Distinction for the last two years. Their scores did not drop at all. In fact, they maintain that high level. However, the distinction requires improvement in certain areas, and they just maintain their high level. But all three elementary schools have that recognition. I would also add, as I noted in the press release, that Plainfield Central Middle School had outstanding performance in science, and for the second straight year, we've seen the high school improve on the performance index. So, there's positive news all around in those reports, and we look forward to sharing those with our alliance partners when we meet with them this month. Sugarman, did you want to add anything with more detail to those numbers?
No, I just, I, I do include some overall indexed, you know, in my report. I just think it's important to note that sometimes, you know, it takes a lot of collaboration and hard work, you know, to have that positive trend over two years, let alone just over one year. So, starting to see that across the board is a very positive thing that we should be celebrating. And it's also noted to, to maintain a high score is sometimes just as hard to get to a high score. So, to stay there too, and to stay at a Level 2 school is a lot of hard work as well. So, there's just a tremendous amount of hard work, dedication, and a lot of just self-reflection and trying new things for the best interest... My boomy voice. For the best interest of, of Plainfield, it's just happening all the time. And I just know sometimes some external noise can blind us or crowd our brain, but it's important for us to stop and reflect on just the hard work, dedication of our administrators and teachers, the collaboration with families, and you start to see those results. And so, it's important for us not to shy away and celebrate them.
All right. Moving on to personnel, resignations and appointments. Mr. Brennan, will you walk us through?
Yes, and I'm going to have a request for a motion as well. If you take a look in the board packet at resignations and appointments, following the board packet, we did have another resignation, which I communicated to the board. You have in front of you the resignation of Mr. Evan Jones, who will be leaving Shepherd Hill Elementary to become a principal in Wyndham. Mr. Jones, while you're with us for a very short time, we appreciate all that you did for the students at Shepherd Hill, and we wish you best of luck in your next journey. We do have a few open positions that we have. Those open positions are largely unchanged, although we have expanded this report slightly to ensure that all of the different pieces are covered. I'm going to steal yours for one second because I just skipped that page. So, we do have a second grade teacher that is open right now at Shepherd Hill Elementary. That is because we had a retirement of a reading teacher at Musup Elementary, and the teacher at Shepherd Hill is going to be filling that grade 2 position. We are still searching for a general music teacher for Fridays for grade 3. We've expanded that to a point 4 with hope that we may be able to lure in some more candidates. We do have special education classroom teachers open at Shepherd Hill and Musup. I know Mr. Jones is interviewing one, I believe, tomorrow. We have had a school psychologist open for 411 days. I want to note that number on the far right side here for number of days. We do have an RSP, Special Education Teacher, open at Plainfield High School, and we are still looking for speech and language pathologists and speech and language pathologist assistants, SLPAs. As noted, the support services continues to be the area where we struggle the most to fill. However, we are going to continue to look and try to move forward in those areas. And I would credit our administrators for the fact that that list is actually as small as it is. Our team has been working very, very hard to find the best people to work with students in our district. So, I'm, I'm looking for a motion from the board to accept the resignation of Mr. Jones and accept the resignations and appointments as presented. Is that moved? looking for a motion from the board to accept the resignation of Mr. Jones and accept the resignations and appointments as presented.
Is there a move?
I'm sorry, what were the appointments? Okay, so there's a motion that's been submitted by Samantha. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I would like to speak to the hiring process for Shepherd Hill Elementary School for the board, answer any questions you may have. Last week on Thursday, I did meet with the Shepherd Hill PTO to speak to them about where the process was. At this time, the position is posted. As I noted when I spoke to the community, we had a very strong pool previously. We are looking to be closing the position in the next five days and then I will be reaching out to the board to see if there's individuals who would be interested in participating in meeting with some of the candidates. We have met with most of the candidates who have applied before, so I don't anticipate having a five-stage hiring process, but I would like to invite, involve the board, the leadership team, teachers from the school and parents as well. So individuals should expect something from me. I do also want to remind the board that I do not have the power to appoint a principal. In Connecticut, that power resides with boards alone. So for that reason, you'll notice in new business, I am requesting a special meeting in December. It can simply be a remote meeting if we need it to be. And we've done this before to appoint administrative positions, but I will be requesting a special meeting the first week of December to appoint the new principal of Shepherd Hill Elementary School.
So we're hoping to, we're hoping to appoint a principal from the previous pool?
We have it fully open. Many of the applicants we have, we have already met. We had a very strong pool already.
Excellent.
And the last part of personnel is, there is a request. I had to black out the teacher's name because that's how this process works. But there is a request for a special education teacher to, effective November 14th, is requesting leave from now until the end of the year. Hoping that they can return next year as a special education teacher at Musup Elementary School. I'm looking for the board to grant this request for unpaid leave for this individual and to give them the opportunity to return to Musup Elementary School in '25, '26.
And just to clarify, that's for the remainder of the school?
It's for the remainder of the school year.
I move that we approve their leave of absence.
Before we move forward, I have a question. So who would take over for first grade special education at Musup Elementary School if this person were not there for the entire year?
So we currently are posted for that position and we work with the union individuals to be sure that every one of the students has coverage of their caseload because we have to do that according to federal law.
Okay. Are we already, I mean, we're already fairly short here, right?
Correct.
Any open positions?
Correct.
So would be an additional strain to hold this open?
I think I view it a little differently. We have a good special education teacher who wants to return. By holding this open, we're telling this individual that if you'd like to return, we have a job for you.
I'm just thinking about the kids and the strain already on your staff.
I don't believe this individual will return if we deny their request. I believe the individual will resign. It's their intent to stay home for a child marriage leave. If we leave this open, we have them in our district and we show good faith that we'll have a job for them. If we don't leave it open, I believe they would look to seek employment elsewhere when they decide to return to work.
And this is in line with what we've done in the past, right?
This is in line with what we've done in the past for child marriage.
Just wanted to make sure.
So the individual is currently out and we are currently covered. So this is not someone who's looking to be out as of the 14th. This is someone who is currently out. That is our plan. Ms. Fitch, do you want to speak further to this?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Mr. St. Jean said.
The question is, how do we cover for situations like this?
So currently, this individual's caseload is already being covered because she kind of has a small caseload right now.
Can you come up to the microphone? Just because I think people at home probably can't hear you. The concern is that by holding a position, already we're strained and we're short, as Superintendent just said. How are we going to make sure the kids have access and that we are not overburdening our already strained staff?
So currently, this teacher is already out and has not been here this year and her caseload is rather small currently and is being covered by another special education teacher. And as Mr. Brennan said, we would work with that teacher and the unions if they're picking up additional responsibilities to provide some stipend for that work that they might have to do outside the work hours in terms of IEP management. But in terms of services, these students are currently being served.
And I'd like to reiterate the, Mr. Brennan's point as well is that either way, this teacher is not going to be here for the remainder of the year. The real question is whether or not we are going to hold open that spot for a good teacher to return or if she's just going to leave the district.
So we have a motion to approve on the table. Is there, okay. And there's a second to that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. We have, we spoke a little on it, but Shepherd Hill principal hiring process. Is there anything more you want to add?
I guess my last piece was that I will be asking the board for a special meeting and I will be sending a communication to the board directly after to anyone who would like to be part of the process.
What about moving on then to Superintendent's report?
Within my report, there's a large report called the Dalio Foundation Report and I wanted to kick off with this because tomorrow I will be meeting with the Commissioner of Education and Governor Lamont as a member of the Commissioners Council and talking about issues that are important to us. The Dalio Report is a report some individuals may have seen. It was actually published in 2023. However, it highlights something that's particularly important to us coming out of COVID, particularly in Eastern Connecticut, which is disconnected youth. This report's available on our website and it's available for members of the community. I wanted to highlight it this evening to focus on just a few individual pieces and everything that I'm going to speak to comes directly out of this study. First and foremost, 19% of Connecticut's 14 to 26-year-olds have been identified as being at risk or disconnected. Of those 63,000 have been considered to be either severely or moderately disconnected and 56,000 of those are high school students. And I think that's important for us to think about. I'm often asked by parents, why do we have art? Why do we have music? Why do we have band? Why are schools responsible for providing these things? Why is cross-country so important? And when I talk about the importance of giving students a space to be, to feel connected, to be part of the community, I think a report like this, especially going into a time where we'll be talking about what's most important for students, is incredibly important. The definitions used in the report are students at the high school who are at risk. It speaks to students that are off-track. That means that they're not meeting credit requirements. We know that students who are off-track freshman year are 20% less likely to graduate. And if those students stay off-track sophomore year, that number increases to over 50%. It's incredibly significant. Students who go into junior year off-track to graduate. It also speaks to disconnected as having a limited connection to employment and education after high school. When we take a look at the terms used in the report, you'll hear on-track, at-risk, and disconnected. Disconnected is a level considered to be beyond at-risk. Students who are at-risk exhibit some factors that are concerning such as absenteeism or behavior issues. Those students act out. Students that are disconnected that fall into this are either high school diploma holders who are in the community but are unemployed and not enrolled in school, high school non-graduates who are employed, or young people who are not employed, have not attained a high school diploma and are not seeking the adult ed options that we have. When I first saw this report and it talked about the 138 towns that it spoke to and noted that approximately one in five Connecticut young people was disconnected in 21 of COVID, it was this map that really spoke to me. Because if you look at the areas of severe risk, places where we're seeing a reported disconnection between school and employment of 30 to 40%, I want you to look really closely at the northeast corner. Because we noticed Thompson, Putnam, Killingley, Sterling, and even Plainfield are in those places where students are reporting out that they are disconnected, especially coming out of COVID. We are not the highest towns. Those towns were Hartford, New Britain, New Haven, and Waterbury, where we saw an incredibly high level of disconnection. Wyndham is on this list for an incredibly high level of disconnection. But this is an important issue that I think we need to be talking about. And I raise it here and included it in the report. When we talk about trends, right now, the reports are showing from 2015 to 2021 that the number of disconnected youth is increasing each year, although it's slightly declined over the last few years in non-graduates. When we take a look at Exhibit 14 in the report that talks about factors that heighten the risk of disconnection, has a family received services from DCF? Has a family received mental health services? Do the students attend high-poverty schools and are the students involved in special education at high school? Is the student transient? And has the student been moved to an alternative education program? Some of those students are two or three times more likely to be disconnected. So I think the question becomes, what can we do and what are we looking to do? First and foremost, when we take a look at the wraparound services we provide, early identification and focusing on the out-of-school connections, making sure that our counselors and social workers are connected with DCF, making sure that we're providing resources for those students who are transient or homeless, making sure that we recognize students that are from families of poverty, that we're making sure our students of special education are getting all that we're needed, and noting that we're trying very hard to help students here so they don't get involved in the justice system. Because we know that students during the high school time that are involved in the justice system have lower educational achievement, a higher probability of future arrest, and lower graduation rates. When we speak to things that are happening in our schools, I think you'll hear me speak a great deal to why we do what we do with our programs, why we offer before and after-school programs, why we try to get kids out, and why it's important that there is students singing on stage upstairs right now. You know, we have a responsibility to make our schools a place where students want to be, specifically the high school, which is where we see a lot of these factors, but also being sure we're identifying these at the middle school, at the elementary school. I can tell you, our teams are doing quite a bit this year with attendance to ensure that we're making connections there. They're making connections earlier and often. And I'm proud of the work we're doing. However, I wanted to be sure that I spoke to those particular items as we went through. And tomorrow, I will be speaking on the Dalio Report when they're talking about things that are needed. And I wanted to let the board know that this was going to be the focus and answer any questions you may have. My goal is to advocate for resources for Eastern Connecticut, specifically those wraparound resources that larger urban areas have, that we, by being rural and not near a large urban center that may have these resources otherwise has.
I have a question. So I'll start. I have an observation first, though. Exhibit nine, I don't know if you want to put that up there so people can see this, but if you look at the table, it says off-track only due to credits, actually dropped in the most recent survey year and due to other factors, which were the social ones, I would say.
Which page are you on?
It's page 24, Exhibit nine. I just thought that was interesting.
There's a significant connection between disconnection in school and risk of graduating. There's 65 pages to this report. We could talk for an hour on it. Another figure that stood out to me significantly was this map as well.
Where my question is on.
Which highlighted a map of students at risk for not graduating in Connecticut. So it's nice to have this report because often when I go to Hartford and speak about the northeast corner, I don't have the hard data. I simply say there's a lot you need to come out and see and this report gives me the hard data to speak to. That there is risk, there is need, and there's a need for resources for our kids.
One of the things that I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, I just didn't, I didn't actually ask my question yet.
Oh, okay.
So it's actually on this exhibit right here. So it just gives Plainfield a range, right, which says 30 to 40. So my question is, do we actually know, it's a two-fold question, do we actually know what the percentage of Plainfield is at in that range of 30 to 40? And what is our actual missed graduation rate, we'll say?
So I can report at the next board meeting what our graduation rates are. You can find those numbers on edsite.gov. If you want to pull those, I don't want to give a wrong number unless Mr. Sugarman wants to look it up while I'm talking. So while I'm talking, Mr. Sugarman's going to access that actual number. I don't have, I have 65 pages of the Dalio Report. I did not go into their data. I can go into their website and find that to get the actual number. I do know that their numbers are based on a variety of factors that go outside of just polling. They look at socioeconomic status.
Sure.
They look at all the different elements of the community to make this determination.
Well, 30, I mean, if it's 30%, that's vastly different than 40% when you're talking about a population the size of Plainfield. So, because it's small, I think.
Mr. Sugarman, do you want to talk about graduation rates?
Sure. Do this without pulling stuff. So I think it's important to look at like the larger trend. So Plainfield's graduation rate dating back to 2010 to 2011 has not passed 90%. And so it's averaged right around 85% with a low point of 2019 at 79.5 and a high point at 88.2. I will say recently, it has went 88.2, 81.8, and back up to 87.9. So there's been some fluctuation the past couple of years. But when you drill down and look at the discrepancy between special education and non-special education, our special education student population graduation rate has the highest it's ever been since 2010 is 71.1. And then.
I apologize that Mr. Sugarman is breaking everything.
All these microphones around me. I'm good. And then also, I can filter this by their foster status, free reduced lunch status, gender, high needs. But again, high needs, the highest it's been is 82. And again, by free and reduced lunch, eligible for, eligible for free lunch, again, it follows that same trend where you can get as low as 65% graduation rate. So like the numbers are very real, right? And I think what the Dalio Foundation report, actually, just speaking to that on a personal level, I know some of the people that wrote that report personally and professionally. I think it was surprising to them that the Eastern Connecticut turned out the way it did. I think they were expecting that to highlight the metropolitan areas, which it clearly does. But I think one thing that clearly also came out of it, when you just look at the data and you have just objective data of what the definition of disconnected meaning of this means, you have this county that is all kind of experiencing the same thing. And I think that's what that shows and that's what that highlights. And it's something to address that. It's about a community sense about, you know, we're doing manufacturing and maker space and giving kids all prepped, but this. and giving kids all prep, but exist out here. That, that's a conversation. It's, it's a community conversation in a lot of ways to have that. I think we're the right place to start that conversation and push that conversation and just to shine a light to the commissioner and the governor, but the numbers, the numbers match. I mean, our graduation rate has, um, struggled, and when you break it down into subgroups, special ed, high needs, um, status, you know, free reduced lunch status, uh, there, there's a significant gap. There's a significant achievement gap, um, in there. That highlights that disconnection that we're talking about.
I'm not, I'm not sure that I agree with you because it, because it's saying right here that it's thirty to forty, so that would suggest that our graduation rate would be anywhere from sixty to seventy.
It, it's a, it's, that's an at-risk.
It's an at-risk.
Right, right, which exactly, that was my point, and that's the reason why I asked you about our actual graduation rate was because...
It's not a one-to-one correspondence. So like, the, the numbers there, it, graduation rate is one of the indicators that they're looking at for someone to be at risk or disconnected. Um, it's, but it's not the sole thing that they're looking at.
I know, but the point in me drawing those, that parallel or the connection between that was to, was to highlight how our students seem to be overcoming whatever these, these challenges are that put them at risk by at least a little bit.
I would say anecdotally, I would put up, um, the pride and the passion and the hard work of any Plainfield student to any other student population across the state.
Okay, we're agreed then.
Okay.
Um, one of the other things that I'm hoping that we'll be able to see from this, Ms. Rinton, is when, when you're meeting with them, that there is, um, a big difference between some of these counties. Um, when you're looking at Wyndham County as opposed to in the Hartford area, um, you're going to see a certain demographic shift. One of the things that I don't see reflected in this report, unfortunately, because it is, um, the entire state as a whole, is we're only seeing a nine percent difference in gender between disengagement. I, I think once you dig down into the granular detail, which I know because I've looked at the granular detail on this, is that we have a, uh, much higher amount of disengaged, uh, young men than are in some of these other cities. And that's one of the things that I think we need to address the most.
I, I, I don't disagree that I think that's a real issue. Um, I, one of the other items that, that I would highlight in this report is, um, the way in which the state gathers data, uh, is also based on, uh, a minimum number, what they call an N-count. And if you're too small to be part of the N-count, you're discounted. Um, and Eastern Connecticut is full of many small rural towns under two thousand, um, which don't meet the N-count threshold to be considered. So when the state processes data in groups of need, uh, those small towns are discounted. But if the small towns band together and called themselves a larger town, uh, they would have a population that would subsequently be counted and gain the resources. So, um, we're talking, uh, myself and some of the regional superintendents, for those who don't know, I'm, I'm chair of the Northeast Regional Superintendent's Group, are talking about ways in which we can, uh, regionally work to lobby and leverage to get the resources we need in Eastern Connecticut. And, and data like this helps us a lot. So I appreciate the Dalio Foundation for the report.
Yep, and, uh, I, I mean, for myself, I, I have faith in you advocating for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, I see, one, I'm really glad that you mentioned, because I was going to ask if you were banding together with the other, like, I went to the Northeast Early Childhood Council, and like, that was really great because you get to see what effect you can have when you, when you go together. And there's some issues there with, with how it's being seen, but it's also, there's a lot of people fighting for the, this northeast corner. Um, I see a lot of, in this report, and as I was reviewing it, there's a lot of invest in and expand and support. And I, we have local, uh, as I've, I know, there's a lot of local support that we elect every year, that we elected last week, uh, to represent us in, in Hartford and help bolster what you are trying to do here. Uh, and I am just, I just want to make sure that when we get to the, the, the meat of it in the next general session, that when we talk about everything that you have advocated for and the other superintendents have, that our representation at, at the senate level and the, the representative level are going to support this and, and make sure that we are, and when it comes to budget time, when we look at this and investing in these things, that we are going to support that as a community, as a, as a region, as, as, as parents and people and, and everyone we can, because we want to get above ninety percent in our graduation rate, and we want to make sure that every child has a chance. So, um, I just want to say that I'm excited to see how this turns out.
Thank you.
Um, I also like the idea of forming an attendance committee. Uh, I just want to put that out there. I would more than happily volunteer for that committee.
We, we, uh, every school here, uh, has attendance committees. Uh, every school here meets regularly. In fact, I could, uh, just prior to arriving, it is still on my computer, probably sitting right here, uh, that, uh, all of the administrators were just, uh, within the last three hours talking about their attendance committee, uh, protocols that are in place, talking about strategies that we're using for monitoring. Uh, if, if you would like, I'm, I'm certain you can happily share, I mean, this is right here. I had it right at my fingertips because they were just doing this work. Um, I'm happy to have, uh, the, the schools share the work they're doing with attendance out with the board so you can see, uh, just how hard, uh, they're working to connect the students and have them come in. And, and along those lines of reason why kids come to school, um, the next item on the agenda is meal counts. Um, if, if the, if, if the board is comfortable closing on the Dalio Report, December presenting you with a November, uh, list that shows these counts have gone up.
So it'll be free before the November counts, right?
Uh, it's free at the end of these counts, actually. We just didn't see the, we, it's, it's just starting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
It's, it's just starting.
I have a point of clarification on this. I don't know if it's actually a point of clarification, but I need, I need clarification.
How can I help?
The, the participation rate, the percentages, is that a percentage of the total attendance or the total who actually have free? Because it's not clear when I'm looking at this if the part...
Two hundred and twenty-three students were now twenty-two students are free.
Correct.
And the school attended.
You see what I mean? I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't understand. It's laid out a little kind of confusing.
So, so there's, so let's, so school X that we're looking at on the first page, uh, there are two hundred and twenty-three students eligible for, uh, free meals. That day, two hundred and eleven of them were in attendance.
Correct.
So we had, uh, forty-six students take free lunch. That is fifteen percent. I'm sorry, breakfast, that's, that's twen, that's twenty percent there. I can, I can break it down for you.
Okay. I, you, I don't need to know right now. I was just pointing out, I think, that it, it's not quite clear when I'm looking at this, what I'm looking at. Because these are the counts, and then these, this is the participation percentages, but I don't know if this aligns, if this, this row here, I don't know what the fifty percent represents, um, when compared to the numbers. Like, I, I imagine it's...
I, I, I'll go right, you ready? I'll do it quick. Five hundred and twenty-two students. Fifteen percent, fifteen point one-three total had breakfast, fifteen percent. Twenty percent of the free students had breakfast, twenty-eight percent of the reduced students had breakfast, we're only hitting seven point two-nine.
And that's what my question was, is it, is it fifteen, twenty percent, twenty-eight, whatever, out of the total, the total number that, that receive it or the number of students that were in attendance that day?
Out of the number of...
Because if you look right here, this is, it's two hundred and twenty-three get free, uh, or, or five hundred and twenty-two get, you know, any of those, and then only four hundred and ninety-four students were in school that day. So are these percentages out of the total number who get it or out of the total number who were there?
Out of the total number that participated. So if we go, I, I mean, I can do the math for you real quick of...
I know I'm splitting hairs here, but I was just confused.
Looks like the middle school has fifty percent in each class, so Central and Plainfield Memorial, they've got fifty percent average daily participation, give or take right around that. Is the advertising better? Like, or how do you get the word out? How do you tell the kids there's free breakfast every day?
It's out of, if you just, I just, the fif, the twenty-eight point eight-five percent is out of, not in attendance, but out of the total eligible, the fifty-two for that rate.
Correct. Correct. I, I did that right here. So there's fifteen, percentage of fifty-two, twenty-eight point eight. That, that's, that's where that reduced number comes from. My, my intent is to produce these numbers each month. I'm, I'm looking forward to this discussion again, by the way. Um, but my intent is to produce these to, uh, what we're looking for, and if you look at the, the far right there, that percentage, I'm looking for that breakfast percentage to grow. Uh, so you'll notice on ten-seven at the high school, it was seven point two-nine percent. It does get up to almost thirteen percent by the end of this, but I, I think we can do better than thirteen percent of the high school kids have breakfast. So, so that's our goal.
Yeah, I think what it boils down to is that we, we've seen a slight increase, and we want to see a big increase.
Exactly. That was, that was the story I was hoping to tell.
But it also makes me wonder, in these numbers, how many of these students, especially at the high school level, were just tardy and breakfast, breakfast wasn't being served at that time?
If, if they're too late for breakfast, they, they miss breakfast, correct, Mr. Peal?
That's why we have such a low...
Tardiness is not that big of a factor for kids.
Oh, yeah, okay. What time is breakfast? Six to seven? Seven to eight?
Seven to seven fifteen.
Well, the kids are downstairs. Seven, seven fifteen?
Any of the kids who are in this waiting for their first period, if they're not, I mean, how many of them are actually going to go up to the cafeteria and just come back? They don't have to get here, you know, at least ten minutes earlier than their class, and no high schoolers want to get up ten minutes earlier and give up one of their students.
We have a couple of experts in the room.
I will note, though, that the lines are increasingly long outside, and getting into the building has proven to be a challenge in the morning, and that's seven to seven fifteen. In order to get to your locker, get ready, and get up, my own high schooler has said it's not feasible for me to get breakfast at school, I guess.
You come up for a parent drop-off?
Yeah, or the buses. Does the buses hold up?
Would there be another opportunity to make another, maybe not for the hot food option, or they, they could if they, they have hot boxes? So would there be another location that they could do breakfast?
Like a little kiosk or a breakfast bar right in the opening?
Because, yeah, they have hot boxes, cereal doesn't need anything, they can have milk coolers.
Bagels or something?
Can we hit remember next to Dana? I feel like with the, like, now that we have to use lockers, it like, makes a time that we have, like, even in between classes also, but like, with the breakfast issue, like, it does take a long time to get into school, like, like, just this morning, I had to wait like five minutes for all the parents to leave school, to drop off their kids, for me to be able to pull in and park. So then I was like in school at like seven oh seven, so I realistically wouldn't have been able to go all the way upstairs to my first class over here and get breakfast and come down, just because of the long time.
Yeah, I know. The, um, last year, like I used to, sometimes we would go up to the cafeteria because a lot of people would get breakfast, uh, and, or like, meet up with people, walk to class, but I haven't been up there like this year just because of the, uh, lockers, getting to the locker, get, putting my stuff away. So I wouldn't really know, honestly, uh, how many people are utilizing for breakfast this year.
Yeah, like, every morning, everyone, like, basically everyone in the school used to go up there, and then like, it's kind of just like, once you're up there, you're gonna go get breakfast just because your art is already available, because we didn't have to use lockers, so it's like, you come to school seven, like, ten minutes early, you're not gonna want to go to class like right away, earlier than you have to, so it kind of just made it like more of an opportunity for people to eat lunch just because it was, or breakfast just because there was more time.
So when you're up there, it's just a time issue?
Yeah.
I will note, I think something does need to be done after I've seen it about the drop-off with the lines, it's an accident waiting to happen up there.
Yeah, maybe think about what time to have breakfast, ten minutes later, ten minutes earlier. Something to get you guys some time.
I'm going to leave that up to the outstanding staff of Plainfield High School to try to figure out how to get more students involved.
And that's Mrs. Keller. We'll figure it out.
Well, let's, let's see how it progresses during the month of November and December. We could, I think there's a lot of options. Uh, last piece is, this is not a vote tonight, but I did want to share with you, um, for your review thoughts, and, um, if you'd like to ask any questions that, uh, this afternoon or save them till December when we do it. East Con has released two years of calendars. Um, so we released a sample of what next year's calendar with dates, uh, would come along. Our team is going to be finishing off calendars. Uh, my quest for the board, or my question for the board, is, uh, we have never voted in pursuit two years of calendars. We have had some families say it would be nice, uh, for planning vacations and travel and other pieces, if, uh, we could possibly do two years of calendars. Uh, my, my question is, uh, how would the board like to see calendars in December? And, um, uh, would we like to continue to do one year, or would we like to, to look at approving, uh, vacations specifically for two years now that regionally they're doing a two-year calendar?
Did, did the law change on that?
This is really, uh, about dates. Um, so, so we have the ability to approve an academic calendar for two years. You're thinking of graduation date.
Oh, that's, that's what we can only do at a certain time?
Correct.
The only thing that I would give for feedback is, it doesn't tell, like, we see parent conferences, but it says early release date, early release date. As a parent, I look at the calendar here, and there's very rarely a week where things are interrupted, like October, November, December, January. I just want to know, as a parent, I think it would be nice to have the PD of what it is and why, like, to, to, as a parent, to know, like, hey, my kid's not in school, why aren't they in school? Like, it's, to me, it always seems like they're out more than they're in.
So, so just to expand on that, um, you, you'd like to know which days are PD, you'd like to know, like, the teachers are doing the science of reading with, uh, this particular person on this day.
Yeah, or what the, even what the standards are for PD, like, what is the, you know, if they're out, what are the teachers doing? What are they learning about? What, what's occurring within the district?
I, I would be okay with it just saying professional development. I mean, maybe separately, we could put together a list of what those PDs are. I wouldn't want to clutter up the calendar.
No, 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 not on the calendar. It's just, I like, like, we get the calls of it's Professional Development Day, or, you know, there's no school. It would be nice as a parent to know why there's no school. Like, yes, it's Professional Development Day, but what are the teachers doing that day?
I mean, I can't speak a hundred percent for the staff, but I would imagine that they, um, maybe they don't know when the development is going to be, you know, in, in February or March of next year. But I do agree, it would be nice to know, um, like, to have that communicated at least ahead of time, you know, if not on the calendar, plus I don't think there's a whole lot of room here.
I, I...
It would be nice to know.
We have communicated, Mr. Sugarman's gone around and taken photos and done those pieces. We, we can, we can talk as a team about the best way to communicate that out. Um, I, I can tell you that, uh, it, I, I think it might make the community feel good to see a photo from the, from the second floor here of the entire high school staff coming together here and working on their charter and the ways in which they teach students emotional regulation.
Yeah, Mr. Peel's on Instagram.
Well, we, we do see him on Instagram, but if, if the request is coming here, we can, we can talk about ways to, to make it clear.
I discourage social media.
Well, um, to, to that effect, um, I did want to let the board know that we're in the stages of, uh, finalizing, uh, the community safety event. Uh, Mr. Peel and I spoke today. Uh, I spoke to Mr. Almeda. I also, uh, spoke to Scott Driscoll, uh, who's going to be coming out. We're looking between either December fourth or tenth, I should have the date tomorrow, uh, where we'll be doing, uh, a two-fold, uh, event. One of them will be, uh, during the day, talking to students at the high school about social media and what they call their digital tattoo. And then, uh, that evening, we're going to be, uh, speaking to, uh, family members and, uh, community... and, uh, community members from all of the schools will be welcome, and, um, Mr. Driscoll's gonna be going over, um, safety apps, he's going to be, uh, talking to parents, uh, for the first forty-five minutes about how to work with and understand the apps your children are using, and actually how to interact with their apps. And, um, uh, following that, we're going to be doing some scenario work about students and ways parents can support their child in the online journey, and then, following that, uh, Mr. Almeda and I, uh, the chief, are gonna be talking just in general about safety and schools and our responses. Uh, so it's gonna be a two-hour event, we're just finalizing to make sure we don't have any conflicts, it'll be either December fourth or tenth. Um, we thought we had no conflicts tonight, and, and I missed a cabaret I wanted to see. Uh, so before I put out a final event, we just have to double-check and make sure that we have everything we need, and that'll be going out this week.
All right, are there any other questions for the superintendent? If not, moving on to Assistant Superintendent Report.
Perfect segue, I, move it out again, perfect segue, I will, we talked a lot about the data, next-gen accountability results that I have in there, uh, but item three in the Assistant Superintendent Report, um, kind of outlined some of the, uh, professional development that we've done in August and October, so I just want to highlight that. And also, if you follow us on, uh, Facebook, on October twenty-fifth, we had a pretty length, the Facebook post that really has about twelve pictures on there, um, of every building, us engaging professional development, uh, because I, I do echo your sentiment, um, it is hard for people outside of the, the world of education to understand all the things that we are responsible for in our world, um, and we take very seriously. So, since the beginning of the year, staff have done Ruler, which is SEL, Professional Development, Professional Development on our new, um, Learning Empowerment and Growth, um, Plan, which is our Coaching and Evaluation Support, Educational Technology with our new SIS System, our Literacy How and Science of Reading Partnership to better, um, improve our literacy instruction and outcomes at our elementary and middle school level, DIBBLES and how to do the DIBBLES Assessment, which is a requirement for K-three literacy assessment, how to better utilize the data and reports to inform instructional practice, Elective Math Training for our middle school staff, uh, 'cause it is a complex, it is a big lift, and it is a huge significant shift in how you actually just teach mathematics skills. Um, we've done CTLs and DOTS Assessment Training for our Readiness Program, which is the Early Learner Developmental Standards. Uh, this past October, we again had our math coach in from CREG to support our middle school, we did QBS De-escalation and Safety Training, we've done MTSS Data Team Training. I'm gonna do all of this, because I do want everyone to know that we are busy on our PD days. Uh, we continued with our Elementary Literacy How Training, um, in partnership, we have a cohort that goes to Trumbull, and we bring in coaches here, and we've done Restorative Practices Training in District Two as well. So, all of our training in Professional Development is aligned to our priorities as a district, and what are our strategic goals are as a district, we do our best to align those, but also some of them are mandated and required, right? So, uh, QBS and De-escalation Safety Training is, is part of the job with some of our specialized programs, and to do that work is, is important. Um, and I think just one highlight that I will highlight here too as well, is the importance of the calendar, of doing it earlier, is one, um, since I've been here, we've kind of like changed the structure of the calendar, kind of almost every year, and as a parent, it's like, okay, what's the pattern, right? And I think we kind of have a good pattern right now, and to our, what we're trying to do is just kind of maintain that pattern, um, and roll it over and make some adjustments here and there, where we always look where, Mike, where Halloween falls, right? We always look at that, you know, and where the winter break is gonna fall, like, and how do we capture, you know, Christmas and Christmas Eve and New Years? But we do want to get into a fairly general pattern, because, one, we want to let the parents know what to plan ahead, we don't want to constantly be throwing them off, but really, two, we want to be planning out our professional development, you know, to really be thoughtful, um, and, and action-oriented for our teachers. Um, so I think that's the other thing of connecting with the professional development with, um, our calendar. Just a couple other quick highlights, we talked about Westminster Tool, I can't praise them enough, um, so thank you Westminster Tool for your support in October. Um, and then also, a couple things, our district, our Educator and Leader Growth Plan was officially approved by the state. Um, we participate in the K-three Literacy Assessment Task Force, an advisory group with the state, we've been asked as a district to participate there. Uh, we have some members go to Igniting Change Conference and Ed Rising Symposium, um, and then all of our staff, um, the Title IX Coordinator and our admin team participated in pretty thorough and in-depth, uh, Title IX training as well.
Is this on our website as well? Because when we get questions from the community, it would be nice if we can refer them to the website.
The, the board packet is, there's not, there's not a separate, uh, place that's, we don't have a section of the website that's, this is the professional development our staff has done.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions? All right, moving on. Policy Committee Report.
Um, if you take a look at what's in front of you, it was also sent to the board digitally. Um, I'll hand it over to a Policy Committee member, but you have minutes of the last Policy Committee meeting, and you have a first reading of Policy P5131 dot eight-one, Electronic Devices.
Yep, so this is our, is our first, yeah, first reading of this, um, this is the Electronic Device Policy. And basically, to create this policy, we just had the high school, um, staff come in, so Principal Peel, uh, came, and we had input from him and a group of his teachers, they had done this kind of feedback session where he got a bunch of feedback on what teachers wanted to see and what they thought was best. Um, so they came to that first meeting, I believe, in September, where we discussed this policy. Um, some of the concerns were, the teachers felt like it would be more conducive to learning without the distraction of the cellphone. Uh, there was also well-known the feeling of some parents wanting their child to have some access to a cellphone, uh, in case of emergencies, or sports at the end of the day, or something like that. Uh, so I think we all worked really hard to come up with a policy that supported education, um, and try to give the teachers enough support to remove, um, the devices from the classroom and not have it be something that's a distraction, or gets in the way of building relationships. Um, and so that's sort of what we've come up with here. So the first page is kind of explaining to you the definitions, what is a personal device, what is tech, you know, what is a technological device? Um, the second page talks about what, the meat of it, really, what, what's the expectation in the elementary schools, what's the expectation in the middle school, and what's the expectation at the high school? Um, and then on these following pages, it's the responsibilities of the board and superintendent, uh, the responsibilities of school leaders, okay, to support implementation and adherence to the policy, and that sort of continues. So what is teachers and staff responsibility, what is families and caregivers' responsibility, and likewise, students? Um, we wanted to sort of engage everybody, um, and, again, it just sort of connects this policy on the last page to other policies, so if the policy isn't followed, if there's repeated violations, um, and things like that. And we also, at the Policy Committee meeting, let Principal Peel know and to, to sort of disseminate the message to all the teachers, if this policy goes through and it's voted on and it's passed and approved, and three months down the line, the teachers don't feel like it's supportive enough, right, that they're still struggling, that electronics are becoming more of a distraction, the policy's not strong enough, uh, or maybe the policy's too strong, and now we need cellphones everywhere, um, we can come back to it and work as a, a board to change it to be either more supportive, or less restrictive, or whatever the teachers and the parents and students feel works best.
I have a question. Um, so part of the responsibilities for the school leaders, um, actually, I don't know if this is the last one, but, anyway, it says, um, incorporate digital citizenship, education content, and skills as part of the curriculum, so I'm on the curriculum committee. How are we planning on doing that? Is it going to be part of one specific class, or as a generalization across multiple classes? Um, and do we have an idea of how that is going to be approached?
Um, yes, we'll answer it on three different levels. I'll, I'll go back to, um, the, the board retreat, uh, and, and remind that, that the job of the board is to say let there be light and not to screw in the light bulb, uh, and I think we have to be careful sometimes when we try to screw in the light bulb, but, um, we have several different ways that we teach, uh, these sort of skills. Uh, once the board dictates that these skills must be embedded in the curriculum, it then becomes the job of Mr. Sugarman, uh, to work with the teachers to determine the locations that all of these pieces are in. Right now, there is no, um, there is no policy that dictates, uh, teaching digital literacy, but individuals like Scott Driscoll coming in to speak to the students, putting these programs on, that all becomes part of, uh, a belief that the board is exhibiting that it's important that students understand the device in their hand.
All right, so at this point, I'd be looking for a motion to accept the first reading as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, at this time, we have our public forum. Um, is there anyone who wishes to address the Board of Education during public forum? I didn't see anyone on the sign-up list, so... No, he's, he's good, he's good. So with that, we'll move on to Old Business Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Budget Facilities Grants and Echi Report.
I will pass things over to our business manager, Mrs. Brennan.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so I would like to start with Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four, to give the board an update on, uh, how everything's going, closing out that fiscal year. The audit is still underway and going well, um, we've been on time submitting, uh, requests that they've given us, uh, new requests are still coming in weekly, but everything is going well. Uh, one area that they have brought up with us is, uh, working with a contracted company to get our system set up in a way that works with best practices with the software that Markham, uh, the audit is using. So we are looking to get, uh, we're looking into different options to move forward with that, we don't have an estimated price at this time, or a list of those contracted services, but we are waiting to hear from Markham to, to get that list. So, basically, on the backside of an accounting software, there's journal entries that need to happen, um, so we are just trying to align with the Markham audit and make sure that everything is, uh, a little bit easier moving forward. For last fiscal year, we still have three open purchase orders, um, that we're still looking to close out. There's only one for the Shepherd Hill Construction Project, uh, the project is completed, we're just waiting to receive an invoice. The other two are for Plainfield High School, for the HVAC units on the roof, uh, both of those are, we are just waiting for the parts to ship. Uh, we've been in contact, constant contact with the company, um, but the items are just on backorder. The numbers for last fiscal year have not changed, so the total budget balance remaining is still, um, has not changed since last month. So for the two percent set aside account, I just want to, uh, let the board know that the, uh, balance reported as of ten thirty-one is eighty-two thousand, one thirty-two and fifty-eight cents, uh, that number has not changed, uh, the only increases from interest. So moving on to the Object Summary Report for Fiscal Year Twenty-four, Twenty-five, our current fiscal year, um, there are still just the two account codes that I've been reporting out each month that we are monitoring. Um, our first is our Communications, and our second is our Capital Improvement. Uh, again, the Shepherd Hill, the Central Office move to Shepherd Hill is complete, but we're just finalizing, uh, all of the expenditures from ECC, so we're just waiting on a couple invoices, the monthly typical invoices. We have transferred all utilities over to the town, um, so it's really just a matter of getting those final invoices, and then we'll know moving forward, uh, what those encumbrances are for the Communications line.
Um, I, I would add to the board that in December, we may add unemployment to that line. Um, we commented during the fiscal subcommittee meeting that, uh, we don't know where it's going to look until we get into January, but right now, we are paying more in unemployment than, some of that's due to, um, the ECC closure, uh, some of that's due to employees who have left District and sought other employment, and they haven't continued to maintain that employment. If, if you didn't know, uh, we're responsible for unemployment, uh, going back well over a year, uh, and if someone leaves our District and takes another job and then becomes unemployed based on Connecticut law, we still pay a portion of their unemployment.
For how long? A year?
I believe it's twenty-six weeks.
Long enough that we're above our projections. Oh, no. If, if you were a teacher who worked for us and willingly went to work in another District, and you're now unemployed, um, we're paying your unemployment.
How long do you have to work for the other District before their unemployment kicks to you?
We're actually both, uh, paying for their unemployment.
So we currently pay unemployment in quarters, um, so we've paid quarter one and quarter two, um, like Mr. Brennan said, it's extremely, uh, higher, much higher than what we expected. So, uh, for the next month's report, I should have a better projection on quarter three and quarter four expenditures.
I'm optimistic everyone will be working.
Um, so for this fiscal year, uh, another, uh, change that we made was we did some, uh, budget transfers, uh, so since we are getting into budget season for next fiscal year, I took the time to, uh, really look at our current budget, um, in reconciling all of our salary account codes. Uh, so, uh, as you know, over the summer, uh, we have vacant positions, or anytime we have vacant positions, we hire a new, uh, new employee, we either hire them above what we budgeted or below what we budgeted, um, so we, we just don't know what that number exactly will be. So I went through all of the salary account codes and made sure that the budget was aligned with the current staff that we have right now. Um, there are still some vacant positions that we're looking to fill, so those numbers fluctuate a little bit, but at least they are in line with our current staff right now. And then my next step will be to reconcile that budget document to our Infinite Visions system, to make sure that everything is being charged to the correct account, um, and that way we will have an exact, um, picture of our encumbrances under our salary account codes. Um, and again, with vacant positions, those change pretty much every month, uh, every payroll, but that way we can keep a close eye on it.
And, and I'd like to compliment this report, this is a great report for everyone to see, and, and Mr. Broton, do you want to share your compliment from our Board of Finance meeting?
Which one?
The, the one about...
The dollar.
Oh, yeah, I, I really appreciate the, uh, the listing of the dollar, a few times on here.
So on your, in your packet, you'll see the Budget Transfers Document, um, it's quite a long list, but again, all of ninety-five percent of those are salary account codes in the one hundred object category, um, so again, those are all account codes that those salaries changed from what we projected last year with actuals. And yes, there are some that change by a dollar. Um, so next, for this fiscal year, one capital project that I just want to touch on, um, is our Shepherd Hill Elementary Play Brown area, um, where Central Office is located, we are looking to put in a fence there. Uh, Mr. Paul Kudelski has been, uh, great and received two quotes already, um, for this project, uh, one being killing the fences that we've included in your packet that we'll go over later on in the agenda. Um, that number will change slightly, because we are looking to revise the quote to include two gates, um, going into that area. Um, I checked with Mr. Kudelski today, we have not received a new quote, but we're looking to get it very quickly and move forward with that. Pending approval. For our, um, Grant Report, there's only one grant application that is currently pending, um, that we are working on, it's due December second. Um, one change that you'll notice in the Grant Budget and Expense Report from Infinite Visions, um, currently, we have salaries that are charged out of grants, and some of those salar- currently, we have salaries that are charged out of grants and some of those salaries are percentages. So, if a salary currently right before this report, if that salary was 50% out of board and 50% out of grant, every single payroll, that gross amount was a percentage to the board and a percentage to the grant. I have changed that practice. So, we are, we have moved all the encumbrances to be grant first. So, we are spending all of the grant dollars first. And once we expend those dollars, then we will change the encumbrance to be the Board General Fund. So, when you look at the grant budget and expense report, under the encumbrances, those numbers will be higher than what you saw in last month's report and the budget balance remaining will show an overage. This is not, not going to happen. It's just the way that the Infinite Visions software works encumbering those salaries. And then, we've also encumbered the salaries under the General Fund, so we know what we're spending out of the board money. It's just the way that it shows on the grant budget and expense report. So, this will help us spend the grant money first and then the encumbrance will switch over to the board funding.
It's actually quite savvy if you look at the way the state's changed the way in which we pull money from the state. We actually have to spend it and then pull down what we spent as opposed to, we used to be able to ask in advance prior to payroll. So, this will actually allow us to get ahead on our state encumbrances, which is a good place to be.
I have a question. And I don't, I'm not sure if you'll, if you'll know this, maybe you will, and if not, maybe Ms. Breton will, but we weren't already doing that? And why if we weren't?
So, the way that the software works, you're able to do it either way. You can either do each payroll as the percentage within grant and within board funding, or you can do 100% one way and switch it midway through. This way is a little bit more manual work because you have to switch the encumbrance once the grant funds have been expended. But the state just recently changed how we draw down those funds. So, this way, since we have to do it on a reimbursement basis, we have to spend the funds first. So, this way will, is just better for us now.
Thank you.
For all the grants ending September 30th, all of those grant expenditure reports have been submitted. So, that's final. Any questions there? All right. Moving on to the facilities report. The biggest project that's been going on in the month of October is fall cleanup and preparing for winter. Mr. Kudelski has been working on winterizing all of the vehicles and tractors and snowblowers and plows and making sure that everything's ready for winter. One big project that I believe I reported last month is not completed yet, but they are working on gutter cleaning on all the buildings. So, they are looking to rent a lift to do this and then we'll do all the buildings at the same time. Some of the big projects that have been completed at Shepherd Hill Elementary, you'll notice that the light fixture in front of the building has been fixed. They added colored LED lights, so it looks wonderful there at nighttime. At Musup Elementary School, they replaced the main heating compressor and repaired some old flush valves in the bathrooms. Plainfield Memorial School, they had some fall cleanup around the building and they also installed an AC unit in the data closet. There were some issues with some overheating from the servers, so they got that fixed. Plainfield Central School, they did a move for a third RSP program room. This was allowing the third classroom to be moved into one central location with the other two classrooms that were for the program. And then, for Plainfield High School, they replaced the section of the carpet with the tile in the library cafeteria area and they've completed some work on the rooftop AC units, the HVAC units. We still have two more to go because we're waiting on the parts. But with that, we've had two more come up with some issues that they're looking at. And lastly, for our monthly insurance ECHIP report for the month of September, our utilization was below projected. So, you'll notice that the survival ratio has actually increased up to 4.43%. So, we are monitoring this number to make sure that we're in line and keeping a close eye on our utilization. But we're in good shape there.
All right. Closing out Shepherd Hill project.
I believe we've spoken to that. The last step of closing out Shepherd Hill for us directly ties into item B of new business.
All right. We'll move on to new business. First up is the request for special meeting in December. Do we have a date? Do you want to pick a date?
My recog, so the last day of Mr. Jones at the school is December 6th, so clearly, we need a date before December 6th. The board has been preferred Wednesdays, so if we were to do a virtual meeting Wednesday, December 4th, we could get that out posted. Or we could do an in-person meeting. I serve at the pleasure of the board. The content of the meeting will be, I will be presenting a candidate as the new principal of Shepherd Hill. And officially, the board has to appoint the person. Interim, I'm sorry, the new interim principal of Shepherd Hill. And the board has to appoint him or her.
So, it would be brief?
It would be brief.
Then I would, I mean, if it's no, there's no objection, I would prefer a virtual...
I wouldn't have to agree, yeah.
I, I would like to do it that week because it gives us full time to complete the interviews and vet candidates. The week before is Thanksgiving. If we, we could do the third or the fifth, I would prefer not to do it on a Friday night. Does, does, Wednesday, December 4th? Would you like to do it after the curriculum meeting, Mr. Sugarman? On the fifth, since board members are already planning that evening?
I will not be available on the fifth.
Do we have a quorum for the fourth? If we were to do the fourth?
The fourth remotely at 6:30?
All right. You have a quorum for the fourth. I just won't be able to be there, but go ahead and have it on the fourth.
Yeah. The fourth at, what time if we're doing it remote?
6:30?
6:30.
Would the board like to do six?
6:00 PM?
Six, 6:00 PM on the fourth.
Do we need a motion for that?
I think as long as we post a meeting, it's a special meeting, I don't think we need a motion for it.
All right. Last up is they requested Shepherd Hill safety fence.
Members of the community will note, we had a parent speak at the last public forum advocating for a safety fence at Shepherd Hill. We were in the process of, and I suppose I shouldn't call it a safety fence. They're advocating for an additional fence around the playground. This has been something that's come off and on of the capital budget in the last few years. There was, going back to the late 90s, fencing back there that used to include it. The fencing has since been removed as this happens occasionally based on usage. I'm looking for a motion from the board to approve the district to engage with a contractor to place a fence in the front part of the Shepherd Hill playground.
I make a motion allowing the district to engage with a contractor to make a decision on the Shepherd Hill Elementary School Playground fence.
Second.
Question sent in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
One quick question, Superintendent. I love that we had public participation last time and I love how quickly you responded to that person's concerns. So, I think that's really fantastic. I hope the public can watch that. I encourage you to watch last meeting's public participation and then come to this meeting. The response, I think, is great. My follow-up question to that is the parent, I believe it was just the one parent, but did also have some concerns about the construction of Shepherd Hill. And I might be getting it wrong, but it was something about, I think, either the noise or the traffic. Any feedback on that?
I spoke to the Shepherd Hill PTO on Thursday night. The construction is complete at Shepherd Hill. I think at times, we have to acknowledge when a mistake may have been made. There were some project, the overall project had a scope that didn't allow things to take place during the day, but there were some projects that they wanted to move quickly on. One of those projects was the installation of doors for the Family Resource Center. And they were trying to get those done as quickly as possible. Those did take place and were, caused some noise during the day. Our team met, we focused on those pieces, we put some things in place to make sure that that won't be an issue again. And we responded to the feedback.
Awesome. I had one more question. I'm sorry. Just pulled up today. On the second, the second estimate here from JC Fence, I see the materials itemized and I'm going to assume that it includes labor, but it does not actually list labor on here. So, could someone confirm? Because I don't...
That's the complete quote. We've spoken to them.
Okay. That there's no other, because it says page one of three, so there must be more details that...
I can pull up the rest of the email.
I just wanted to...
No, I'm happy to pull up the rest of the email.
Not necessary. I just wanted to make a, I just wanted to, you know, address it.
Sure.
I would also like to point out that that was the second estimate. That was 30% higher than the one that we were going with. Right. And so, I'm assuming that it would be another $1,300 for a second date.
I think it says in the packet that we're going with the first one, so...
No, no, we, we won't be going with the second company. I was providing a comparison of where other bids were coming in. The board, the board often asks for that.
Yeah. We had very specific circumstances, asked for multiple quotes on things.
We did.
So, I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you for going with the lower one.
You're welcome.
All right. And there's no further questions? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.